Close enough. I'll go ahead and call our January 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Thank everybody for being here. The first item we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our prior December 5th meeting. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, I will accept a motion.
I'm open to accept it this time. We've got 20, 22 minutes as written.
Okay, I've got a motion to accept as written. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. Quick housekeeping item. SR 23.02 request of the applicant Albert Cordy III acting on behalf of FST Sina for a site plan approval of Bell VIE. That will not be on our agenda today. He is asked to postpone that. That's the property at the northeast corner of North Bayview and Fairhope Avenue. So if anybody is here in reference to SR 2302, the property in downtown Fairhope at the corner of Bayview and Fairhope Avenue, that will be postponed. We have a request to move item four, old new business Laurel Brook Phase One and Two, request for a 12-month extension. We have a request to move that up to the top. Hunter, if you'd like to do that, if there's not going to be much discussion with that, and it's a pretty simple one, I don't mind doing that.
Sure. That is a request. It's two-year preliminary plat approval. You know, we have approved these when they're under construction. They're very much under construction. One of the delays here, if y'all will remember, is this is when a large 86-inch oak tree was removed accident. They came to us and with how to mitigate that, so that was some delays. So I'm okay with that extension request.
Kathy Barnett is here with Dewberry. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions or concerns about that extension request? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Move to grant the request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. Next item on the agenda will be the SWMPP. Is that correct?
Yes, well.
Yep. And just to introduce Kim, she's not at most of our meetings, but Kim is our, one of our code enforcement officers that's instrumental in getting this document adopted or amended each year and approved. This is part of our regular January meetings. So I do want to show a little appreciation for Kim, what she does on a day-to-day basis. We've got a video that's about five minutes long, and then if y'all have any questions about this year's amendments, Kim can answer those in detail.
Y'all ready to roll with the video first, then we can ask questions? This is the same thing you review every year, part of our MS4 stormwater permit with AIDAM.
And let's see, we got to get through the ads. All right. We ready for audio, John?
Give me the green light.
Okay.
We have heard from citizens' complaints.
The water is about a foot from my back door.
Hope river's covered in trash.
Our driveway's been washed away.
There's an awful smell coming from the creek.
All are connected to stormwater runoff. All are important. All deserve our attention. So how do we go about creating a clean water future together? First, we must recognize that as communities grow, the need to manage stormwater increases. Done properly, a well-managed stormwater program simply helps nature's water cycle, promotes community health, and assures our lifestyle remains intact and attractive to new residents and businesses. A survey of over 1,000 Alabama residents commissioned by the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program reveals six common values that are most important to quality of life here. The issue of stormwater runoff plays a major role in each value identified. In 1987, amendments to the Clean Water Act obligated the EPA and AIDAM to require urban areas to regulate stormwater. The Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, or MS4, refers to all stormwater conveyance structures managed by a municipality, county, or other designated non-governmental facilities. MS4 stormwater programs are developed to prevent harmful pollutants from being washed and/or dumped into our stormwater conveyance structures and ultimately into our waters. The MS4 permitting program was introduced in a phased approach starting in 1990. Larger municipalities, having the greatest potential for stormwater impacts, were permitted first. In 1999, smaller municipalities were also brought under the MS4 permitting process. MS4s that are designated by AIDAM are required to obtain a permit and develop a stormwater management program. Your program must be detailed within a stormwater management plan. It is important to understand that this requirement is not just an unfunded mandate. It is vital to the health of your community that the public becomes stormwater savvy in order to safeguard water quality and quality of life. Without this education, the value of everything in our lives is diminished and complaints rise. The requirement states that your stormwater management plan shall include the following minimum steps, also known as minimum control measures. One, a public education and public involvement program highlighting stormwater. Your education program can include brochures, public workshops, and a website with easily understood information for residents to follow. Include a public participation program to ensure community input on stormwater matters. Interacting with residents on stormwater-related committees such as watershed groups, Alabama Cooperative Extension, your local soil and water conservation district, and the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program helps connect citizens to the effort. Two, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Your plan must include mapping and inspecting stormwater conveyance structures such as pipes, ditches, and detention ponds. Ordinances are needed prohibiting illicit discharges of oil, grease, paints, washwater, and other pollutants. Three, construction site runoff control. Your program should include monitoring of all construction sites, even your city's projects, for stormwater impacts from land disturbance. Your program must include land erosion and sediment control, inspections that are documented, and you must have enforcement capabilities. Four, post-construction runoff control. Your plan will encourage the development of post-construction stormwater management to minimize pollutants in new and redeveloped areas. Private and public stormwater facilities must be inspected and maintained. Ordinances that require facility maintenance must be put in place. Five, participants are required to have good housekeeping in place for the control and reduction of stormwater pollutants from public facilities. This includes street sweeping, litter control, employee training, and management of all environmental permits such as scrap tire facilities and underground storage tanks, USTs. Six, stormwater program monitoring is required to provide data to assess how effective and adequate your program is at reducing pollutants. For larger and some smaller MS4s, this includes water quality sampling for pollutants determined by the permit. Seven, larger MS4s and some designated smaller MS4s are also required to cover other items such as industrial stormwater runoff, spill prevention and response, hazardous waste, and the application of pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. Eight, finally, reporting is necessary. Your program must document all steps and report to AIDAM manually to verify that the program reduces stormwater pollutants and minimizes impacts to our waters. A comprehensive stormwater management plan is a powerful tool to help reduce complaints, improve the health of your community, and ultimately protect and enhance the things we value most. Your program may be managed through internal staff or consultants based on your municipality or organization size, trained staff, and budget. At any rate, it is important to realize full compliance is not optional. Many states are levying fines that reach into the millions of dollars. Stormwater runoff affects us all on personal and economic levels. It is a challenge you can meet as a public employee through your work with citizens and through your valuable community connections. Let's work together to create a clean water future for Alabama today and for generations to come. For more information, please visit the Alabama Department of Environmental Management's municipal page at adem.alabama.gov/programs/water.
Vision problems, try adding this to a plot.
Sorry? Yeah, get it off. Do y'all have any questions on our minimum control measures or any of our goals?
Did I understand that y'all are not doing, that there's no one really doing water quality testing now?
We are not. AIDAM does it at some of our beach areas, but we were, we had staff doing it and the certification expired. And because of staff changes at Weeks Bay, the recertification process is kind of a gray area right now. So we did it last year, but we haven't had anything to report for 2022. So we're removing it for 2023 because we don't have anything to report. So it's not mandatory. It's suggested, but it's not mandatory for our type of MS4. It's good to have, but can't get certified to do it. So we do have a link on our website that shows where AIDAM tests, and it's for swimming quality.
What's the certification?
The certification is through the Alabama Water Watch program.
Do they do it locally?
They do it locally, and Mike Shelton with AIDAM, I mean, Mike Shelton with Weeks Bay, he moved to Huntsville. And the lady that's in charge of that now, the program hasn't kicked off for the training and recertification. But it's local.
Is the plan to, when that training kicks off, to have somebody do it again?
Right. Christina in our department, she was doing it in 2021. She hasn't done it in 2022. But as soon as that's available, I think she'll be interested in getting trained again. But there's two types of water quality testing. There's bacterial, and then there's chemical. So she was doing the bacterial for, not bacterial, but for pathogens, for fecal coliform and Ecola.
So the swimming, where people are used to seeing the green or the red for swimming?
Right. That's still happening because that's through AIDAM, and that's still happening at most of our beach areas. We were just going above and beyond and doing creeks. We were doing Fly Creek. We had three sites on Fly Creek.
Okay. So that will start again?
We hope it will. And hopefully, we can get it back going in 2023.
We had someone donate an incubator for the test. They have to sit and maturate for a couple of months, and that kind of gave out. So we've got to get that equipment. That's why she didn't this year, and then we have the certification kind of following up.
Didn't we, in past years, didn't we review the actual stormwater, the plan?
You did.
Okay. But we didn't get it this year.
We did.
Wasn't it my?
It was an email that we didn't put in the packet because it's so thick. We sent it in.
How often does AIDAM test water here?
Well, they test after rain events or once a month.
What's a rain event?
A three-quarters of an inch or more.
And with the change, are y'all just, just now, as far as the stormwater management program plan, is that just for inside the city limits now?
That's strictly city limits because we don't have any authority over maintaining drains in the county areas.
And I don't believe the MS4 even applies in Kansas.
Well, they, the Balden County has their own MS4, and so we're MS4 partners. We share information, and we meet once a year, actually more than that, to talk about problems. And ALDOT actually has their own permit as well, so some of our boundaries kind of cross, but we stay in touch with each other and share information.
Cool.
Game plans and all.
So you just need a motion for us to approve the stormwater
Yes.
... management program plan for another year?
Yep. One of our requirements is that we put this before public review. So this is our public review, and it's also available all the time on our website.
Have a motion to approve for another year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Thank y'all. See y'all next year.
Thank you, Kim. We'll see you in three more months, if it seems like last time.
Chairman, before you introduce the next one, can I get the mic for a couple of minutes?
Yeah. Are you going to introduce?
Yes.
Eric, I hope I was about to.
I got two points from these. I was going to say, I wouldn't say to the end, but one is important because everybody needs to know who's talking on the end down here, our new face. As you know, there's always a pointed position from the staff on the planning commission, and Eric Cortinas is joining us this month. He's our building superintendent director. Title? Official. Building official of the city. So we work together on a daily basis and come at things from completely different points of view. So our debates are nice, and we decided we'd make that public, I guess. And I do want to thank Eric for, as I do all of you, as volunteering your time. So welcome, Eric, and appreciate having you. Other news, I do want to wish Ally the best. She will not be at our next planning commission, so I do want to.
Wait, wait, what did you say?
Ally will not be at, as, sitting in this seat anymore planning commission meeting, so.
What does that mean?
I mean, she's not going to be employed with the city any longer.
Well, did she get a dispensation?
Paycheck every two weeks, actually. So.
Oh, we're going to miss you.
Has done a phenomenal job and.
Is that what happened? You don't love us anymore? That's what happened?
I do. Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you.
Yep. So that was the two points I had. Thanks for the moment. We'll start the agenda items soon. You're ready.
Next item on the agenda, UR 2301, 115211 utility review for AT&amp;T for 250 linear feet of fiber cable.
Thank you. And this is the area, or these are some of the things, I am going to take just a minute because we changed a couple of things, and I want to emphasize one thing in particular. But the area on the map is where they're proposing these lines, and this is working the right-of-way. Your packet had a complete list. We've been a little bit more organized on the new right-of-way requirements. The city council did adopt some amendments to our right-of-way ordinance, and these reflect those. And then the one I really want to emphasize is something, y'all have seen a lot of the construction, a lot of that's been fiber, and it's kind of beat up our utilities. Well, when it hits a water line, you know it. There's a spray, you know, there's a, something happening everywhere. They're having to fix those, and they've been doing that for the last few months. But a lot of times, when they're boring, and if they hit a sewer line, you don't know it until maybe down the road, and then it's kind of hard to prove it. So there is a requirement in these new permits that they will have to video. When they're in the right-of-way where sewer lines are, they're going to have to provide us video evidence when they finish to get free and clear, so that they have not penetrated those lines anywhere. And I just wanted to kind of put that out on record because that's incredibly important to our infrastructure. So, but other than that, I think they are meeting everything else, and we do recommend approval of this utility review.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Just a.
Some clarification. The agenda states 200 linear feet of fiber cable in the Parkstone subdivision, and our package shows a request for 1,800 linear feet? What are we requesting here?
And I believe what happened here, the 1,800 was, there was some coax in this as well. So I believe the larger number is the total, and 1,800 was just the fiber. But the linear feet, Councilman, I don't know that answer. Somebody else looked at these. I don't know the details on that answer, so.
Yeah, I can get with John, but it's possible, too. Our right-of-way ordinance only allows us to charge fees on stuff that is actually in our right-of-way, not in the private easement up within the private property. So we run into some applications where they may have 300 feet of road crossings in the right-of-way, but they're running 3,000 feet up on the private property. And in our right-of-way ordinance, the fees are specific to what is in the right-of-way. And that's possible because we have run into that in other instances.
And I know this is not a right, this section certainly is not a right-of-way, and there might be some others there, too, that do fall through easements instead of right-of-ways.
Any other, any other questions?
I'm not sure I got an answer, Mr. Chairman. I got a guess.
And where is?
Something, and we don't know what it is.
So we, the reviews are looking at anything over 660 feet. The area of, that's the roads, so where it's at.
Isn't there a maximum amount per day?
Well, for the, for the locates. So we only locate 750 linear feet a day.
But you can permit, we can approve.
But you can, because that permit for construction is only good for 21 days?
Yeah.
Or the locates are good for 21 days. This is the utility review that's looking at more the area they're working in and making sure when they go pull that permit, they're meeting those guidelines. So we, what we do is take that permit into a utility review, and I don't know all the details of the permit. And I don't know if it's just an error in one place. I see 1,800 feet listed three different locations.
Would it be safe to say up to 1,800 feet in the resolution? That way you'd cover it?
I think you're, that'd be a safe bet.
If there's no way it's 250.
It's like 250 feet.
Any further discussion? Is anybody here on AT&amp;T's behalf? No other questions? I'll accept a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve the installation of up to 1,800 linear feet of the cable in the Parkstone subdivision, subject to the utility review, because if I don't have anybody here to confirm that, I don't, we want to make sure that the utility knows what's going on.
It's 1,800 feet. The 200, we wouldn't even put it on the agenda, just 250 feet. So I'm confident there might be some, some in easements, but the total project is certainly not 250 feet.
Subject to staff recommendations, too.
Thank you.
I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations up to 1,800 feet. Do I have a second?
Hang on, just for order, I want to make sure the motion is adequately.
I stated subject to utility review. I mean, you're the utility department review. Is that part of the standard process anyway?
Under the permits, everyone will have a chance for that review.
Yeah, I think that's part of it.
And is your motion also subject to staff conditions in addition to updates?
Yes, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is SR 2301, request of applicant Jay Consulting acting on behalf of FST Section Street Hospitality LLC for site plan approval of the Fairhope Hotel. The property is on approximately a quarter acre located at 158 North Section Street.
Thank you, Chairman. And this has kind of been out there for a little while because this did have a board of adjustment case to approve the use. But for anyone that doesn't know, the zoning map on the left shows the location. This is the corner of Section and Oak Avenue. The aerial is on the left. The, there is, anybody that drives by, there's nothing, no buildings on the site currently. This is in the central business district, so we do require buildings to be pushed up to the front lot line on, and because this is a corner, that is on both frontages. The building heights meet the 40-foot height limits with one exception. It's allowed by our ordinance, but the rooftop terrace does allow elevator shafts and staircases to extend to 45 feet, and they are well within that. We'll kind of look at some detailed plans in just a second. The elevations of four sides are shown on the, on the screen. And a landscaping plan was approved. There's one condition on the site plan. I'll go ahead and give you the, the generator location is, is in the place where a tree is proposed, so that needs to be clarified. But other than that, the sidewalks are required to be a minimum of eight feet wide in the CBD. On Section Street, that is eight feet. They've provided that. On the Oak Street side, which has some topography, it's six feet. The zoning ordinance allows city council to make that call to reduce that from eight feet to six feet. So we do recommend that approval. If you should, as well, then it will move on to city council for final approval. Those proposed sidewalks are constructed with the standard city pavers. Parking on-site, there are 14 units within this building. There is no parking required by our zoning ordinance. This is the CBD, and only residential units require parking to be provided. However, the applicant is adding some on-site spaces. There are two on-street parking spaces removed for the ingress and egress of the lot, but six on-site and seven parallel on-street spaces are provided adjacent to this property. That was discussed heavily in the board of adjustment, but of course, planning commission and our city council can, can talk. Again, fences are not proposed nor required except for around the dumpster location. There is an existing fence from the eastern property line and a retaining wall that are proposed along the eastern and southern boundaries. That's highlighted on the, the plan on the screen. You know, all the dumpster locations, stormwater, we're going to, we have a follow-up MOP project that will talk about some of the technical merits, but you know, everything on this screen, we've reviewed and are satisfied with. And, and here's the final site plan. I think they've accommodated most of the comments we had, except for the generator and the tree conflict. Landscape plans, they are providing the street trees as required, and the landscaping plans have been reviewed by our horticulturist, and, and we are satisfied with those. I think this is the location where the landscape plan shows a tree, and the civil plan showing a generator for reference. We did change, and I'll state this, we did change the right-of-way ordinance. In the future, anybody building a balcony over our sidewalks will have to be 12 feet off of our sidewalk, high, 12 feet in height. This board of adjustment case with the site plan they're required to provide in that was submitted before we made those right-of-way amendments. But even still, they did make some adjustments and get those up as high as possible this slope. So while they are not required to meet that standard, they did everything they could. And on one end of the building, it's 10 feet instead of 12. So I appreciate the effort, even though they didn't have to meet that, trying to get with, meet the goals of what the city has, has made and emphasis on. Here's some renderings of the building. And the floor plans, I'll kind of go through those till we get to the rooftop terrace. There was two criteria we made there. There was some distinction between my regulations and Eric's, if you will, when we look at building and planning documents. And building considers a rooftop terrace as a four-story. Our zoning considered that three. So we did make an amendment to our zoning ordinance to allow this with some stipulations. They are meeting all those stipulations, 25% under roof, and then the elevator stairwell can be up to 7.5%. Those are being met and shown on this screen as a diagram. There is also a requirement, if anyone is using as an event space, and there will be temporary events, they can have temporary coverage, but the, to anchor those, they should be structurally integrated with the building. That has been accommodated for. With that said, on the site plan, which will go on to city council, so it is a recommendation, staff makes, does recommend approval of this with one condition, to relocate either the generator or the conflicting tree, subject to planning staff approval. Be happy to, Jay Watkins here, and Paul with, with Jade Engineering is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Hunter. You'd like to come up with this, time of that, anything?
Evening. My name is Paul Marcinco with Jade Consulting. Thank you, Hunter, for the presentation. The conflict that you mentioned in the condition is no issue. We can resolve that. It's a minor conflict with the tree and the generator, so we can relocate one of those two. I'm here to answer any questions you may have and happy to listen. I appreciate staff's time to review this with us so we can make, make the revisions needed and present this tonight.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have a question?
I was wondering about.
What's time?
I had a couple of questions. The easy one is just the dumpster access. Is that intended for something to drive up on the curb, or is it just you're wheeling things out across the curb? What's going on with?
So as part, it's. So, as part, it's, can I put that up on the screen?
Sure.
Okay.
Eric will get you back and forth.
Got it.
Which one you, either the site plan.
Just one of the site plans, just to kind of look at it. Even that one will work right there. So, sort of integrated in with our driveway, as you can see up in the top right corner. Our driveway would be there, sidewalk running across, and then the dumpster would be on private property and present to the street in an enclosure. The sidewalk would be in front of it, but more or less a driveway, so that entire concrete driveway there would allow access for the dumpster, so the truck could pick up.
Okay, so the truck is coming, is, the sidewalk's turned into a driveway and the truck goes across it?
Yes, same way you would.
But it's enclosed.
Correct, like a crosswalk across the driveway.
Okay.
Won't that take another space? Parking space?
So, that is lined up with that parking space in that location. The driveway is X'd off.
The cut, the, the.
Number nine.
If the car is parked there, you couldn't drive up to the dumpster?
Couldn't pick up trash. Or the garbage.
Correct, so the dumpster could be, could be rolled out to be accommodated. That could also be considered employee spot, or the dumpster pickup can just be rescheduled for another time.
But they are planning on a dumpster, not a bunch of little?
Correct, yeah. I don't think that with the amount of trash, we would want to have that many for public works to pick up.
It's just surprising how many people in restaurants do that downtown with the little bitty ones.
And I do want to caution, if it's a rollout, be very considerate of the grade, because we did approve this on one project, and once they loaded that up, they figured out you can't roll this at a certain grade. So, there is a, you know which project I'm talking about.
It's not that one. I know of the other one where they put it right in front of the electrical panel, and when they picked up the dumpster, they actually hit the panel in the service on the side of the building, so.
The wise Henry Los.
The Henry Los there.
Yeah, they put that in and couldn't get it up the hill, so.
That's why they have all the little bitty.
That's why they converted to all the mini, mini personal.
Just wanted to make sure it been thought through because of places like that. But I also just had a blanket question.
Hmm.
The renderings are beautiful. I did, I noticed on the east side, it looks like maybe as civil progressed and you figured out ADA accessibility, it changed a little bit from what was in the renderings.
Correct.
And just because this always comes up, I wanted to ask, are there any other changes that have been made that, where the, the final building will be significantly different from the renderings that, if so, we point them out?
No, the, the renderings are very close to what, what that is. The actual color elevations that were, sorry, I don't want to just flip back and forth constantly. There were color.
Civil looks different from the elevations too.
So, the color elevations, that's architectural kind of, of what that looks like, just to show that general grade change. If you actually look at the grading plan of, of what we've done to be able to create the parking, the ADA requirements to be able to get there, so you have a handicap parking spot, as well as the delivery, or not delivery, but the drop-off area, there's a small concrete area there that's also ADA compliant, and that area allows a vehicle to park, kind of to unload their, their luggage, and that's not even included in the parking requirements or the, the parking on-site.
I, I didn't necessarily have an issue with that ramp or the addition, it just made me, it's not uncommon to do renderings earlier and then things evolve, and so I wanted to ask the question, has anything else evolved that we might want to see?
Understood, absolutely. There's been a lot of coordination between, between us and the architect, so even just looking at this right here, we, you know, you can see the slope of the driveway coming in, and then the flatter area, which would be the ADA compliant area.
I think Jay actually helped answer that before the meeting, so it'd be a good, good opportunity to.
Okay, it's, I guess I look in the landscape plan, it looks like there's planters and a step and a ramp, not just that seamless curb ramp, so maybe I, I don't mean to belabor that point, but.
No, no, I'm, I'm, Jay Watkins, my wife and I are the owners of Section Street Hospitality and are putting this project together, and I appreciate y'all's time on this, and particularly the staffs, because we, we have been working on this for several, several months. To your question about the renderings versus the site plan, I think you would see on the Oak Street side, we had to bring the stairway in to come off of the right-of-way some, so that, that has changed a little bit. The renderings don't reflect any doorways, those were open arches into the courtyard inside. We've now determined that because of the humidity and the rain and everything else in this area, we have closed in that interior atrium now, and so there will be glass doors, and that will be heated and cooled throughout. So, those glass doors are not reflected on the renderings.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if there was anything else significant there, but I don't believe so. But those are the only changes I could note from those, the original renderings are what we've been looking at since inception, probably a year ago.
Okay.
But those changes were made to meet some of the compliance issues with the staff.
Thank you Jay. And all of the water meters, electric boxes, everything's on the private property?
Correct, yes. There's, there was a comment and concern about any fire suppression backflows being in the right-of-way. They will not be, they're designed to be on-site, FTC on-site, backflows on-site.
And we do have an MOP right after us that will talk a little bit about any conditions, but yes, we're, we're satisfied with the provisions of those. And I think a really good job's been done to coordinate all of those, where those locations are.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
It's good though.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would you go to the rooftop plan, please, Paul? I'd like a comment. I agree with Rebecca, this is, this is a very nice plan, by the way, very nice. So, you have an outdoor grilling area on the lower right as you look at the plan. I also note that on the structures, other than those used for elevators and stairwells, we're at twenty-four point nine percent of the total square foot, or we're, we're below the twenty-five percent limit. But on the outdoor grilling area, is that going to require a commercial vent, and would that require a structure? And I would have never thought to ask this question if I didn't go to the Methodist Church, where they have an outdoor grilling area, that requires a vented hood, which was, is kind of surprising to me, so.
Yes, sir. Now, we, the intent there is, we don't intend to have any true kitchen space. We have catering areas where there'll be warmers and that kind of thing. We don't intend to have any kind of full-service kitchen. So many of the events that we go to in this area, these caterers, they want to fry oysters, they want to fry shrimp, they want to, you know, grill a tenderloin or something like that. So, this is intended to be strictly an outdoor area for that type of application. We don't intend to have gas grills, we don't intend to have anything like that that require vent hood or anything of that nature. I mean, truly a grill station, or, you know, somewhere to fry fish or fry oysters, so that it's not in an interior room that then's going to have the odor, or intended to be separated away from the actual event space.
Yeah, so is that?
Yeah, what we'll.
You don't require that?
Yeah, what we'll wind up doing is when we get the construction plans and the sprinkler plans, if we have possible hazard or, or possible cooking that'll happen up there, the sprinkler plan may require sidewall sprinkler heads on the backside of what is the catering kitchen to cover that. That's how we do it with residential properties. If they've got a grill or they've got a porch, you're going to have sidewall head sprinkler heads that come out. So, we'll evaluate that when we get the sprinkler.
And I would welcome the opportunity, because the idea would be that we would just have natural gas hookups there, and if the caterer brings a grill or caterer brings a fry station, they would plug in and be, be, be going.
Yeah, from experience, we had a condo project in Orange Beach where they had gas grills out on the porches, and we had full sprinkler coverage on those porches. Here, since you don't have a cover, they would just come out the side of the back of the, of the catering kitchen area.
Just didn't want us to get up against that twenty-five percent limit and say, uh-oh, now we're exceeding it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. This is not a public hearing, does anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns about this item? All right, commissioners?
I move to approve the request.
I have a motion to approve the request, do I have a second?
Second.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry.
With the staff recommendations?
With staff recommendations.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, do I have a second?
Or to recommend?
Second.
All right, a motion or a second?
A, a, a motion to approve, recommend approval to the.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Any further discussion?
All right. It's okay with you? Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
I have a slow start to the year.
Yeah, there is. Okay, if okay with everybody, this is the absolute same project, everything the same. I'm just going to highlight the differences, because this is the MOP portion, this, it does get approved with the, with the planning commission, so it does not move forward. And for the public's sake, this is more the technical reviews, they are very much integral reviews together. Our utilities have worked with, with the applicants, and, you know, everything is, is approved or handled via conditions of the approval. So, without getting details, there's some, there's some drainings work that's not got to be, that's got to be relocated and tied in. We unfortunately, we just, we, the city just went in and did some work right in that area, right where their planned ingress and egress is. So, we're going to, they're going to have to relocate that S-one inlet top. Gas is available on Oak Street, and they don't have any problems getting that. Power will be underground from the existing line on Oak, I'm sorry, on Section Street. Sewer will have to be extended down to handle, sorry, water will have to be extended. Sewer will gravity feed into existing sewer. Again, landscape plans, parking and sidewalk, we, we covered, and this is just a copy and paste of those summaries, because they're part of each review. Same site plan review, or same site plan here, same landscape plan, same elevations, same renderings. We have the same recommendation of approval, but with three separate conditions. One is the approval of the case that will move on to city council, and two is the fire protection line that shall be shown, as shown in the plan, shown in the plans, and the six-inch water line shown shall be, intended to be serviced and will be labeled on the plans. There is some major construction cost, they're still working on some of those details, so we have a recommendation of approval if y'all have any questions related to these things, and I think you, I did go over the dumpster, but that was kind of handled under this review or the, the rollout, but be happy to talk about it further if you'd like.
I've got one question, Hunter, and this isn't really super specific to this project, but in general, as I, you know, sit here and I see a lot of these projects coming in, or like trays that was, you know, coming earlier. Case like this, we're in an area that's, you know, pretty tight on parking, which is good, means we have a lot of people here, and I think this project will be great for the central business district with the people coming to the hotel and frequenting the businesses, and, you know, the comprehensive plan talks about really protecting and promoting the central business district, because that's, you know, the heart and the soul of Fairhope, and I think that it, you know, totally fits in with the comprehensive plan and love this, this project overall. You know, love it to be a little bit shorter and have a little green, but, you know, it, but, you know, that, that's how it has to be. But, you know, we go to a place that doesn't have very good parking, we give up two public parking spaces, you know, trays, we would have given up two public parking spaces. I drive to the back of the Monkey Bar, where we've given up three public parking spaces, where I don't see any reason where we had to give up more than one, you know, with their gate. Do other municipalities give those up that easily, or do they charge when they give up a public parking space? When you see what a space is, is valued at to a downtown area, you know, it's pretty tremendous, and I understand, you know, in this area, you know, you've got a hotel, you're bringing a lot of people in, and that's going to really help the area, but like when you give up three spaces, the Monkey Bar, just carte blanche, rather than making it maybe work it out and say, well, hey, if we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a space, you know, to the city to go into some kind of a fund, maybe we can just do away with one. You know, maybe we can, you know, and I don't see any reason why that one couldn't be, or you, you go to places where you see all the no parking signs, and they've got their, you know, they're parking head-on, like in front of Ravenite, where half the cars on public space and half the cars on private space, but there's no public parking there, but there's no sidewalk there. I mean, has there been, how do other municipalities handle that, or do you know? And, and, you know, we don't have to answer that now, but it's just something that I, I think we should certainly look at, you know, maybe some type of a fee charged for each space given up in the future.
And, and certainly don't know what every jurisdiction, but we have looked at, and we, we can discuss this in part of this review, as we have in some, some other projects. And it's always a little bit of a balancing act. We don't require parking, and we don't have setbacks. But when somebody, as we've seen, when somebody tries to cover the whole lot, there's no parking for anybody, so then the burden of whatever is happening there is a hundred percent going to fall on the public spaces, and they, so, but in that case, they don't take one away for ingress, because they don't need it. But I do think that in lieu of fee is something to look at, because, and, you know, they, there is public parking taken away here. I think at the end of the day, what, based on our regulations today, this is a good, it mediates all of those challenges and, and provides a good solution. But I do think, and, you know, we, we did create an ad hoc parking committee that is completely staff's fault, that John's chairing, to, with some jurisdictional things happening last year, it's been hard to get to some of those, but that is part of that, those goals to evaluate, are, do some type projects need on-site parking requirements? But things like the Monkey Bar, which had drive-through, tellers, you know, that didn't come to, to us for, looking at that, it was kind of historic, there, there were never any parking spaces there. But I think there's some opportunity to even look at all of Bancroft to, to add some parking.
Never, I mean, whenever, you know, Mannix had it.
Yeah.
You know, but just saying.
Yeah.
But, but I've, I've said my piece, and that's not necessarily the time for it, but that is something that I hope the parking committee will look into.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if you want to sometime, sit down and give you a council perspective on some of the parking issues and some of the solutions that we've talked about. We don't want to do it in here, it's a long conversation, but we've, we've had those, some pretty in-depth discussions. And I want to say, for this project, we do lose a couple of spaces, but, but as Hunter points out, the fact that they're putting on-site parking, if all of those people were forced to park on the city streets, we would be losing many more spaces. But they are, they are actually adding more than they're taking up, and they're also adding a handicap parking, which in that area, there's no handicap parking there, so that, that has actually an addition of one space.
No, I like the project, I'm just, you know, using that as kind of a segue.
If you have that conversation, may I be part of it?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right.
Just now that we had another chance to look, I did, I was curious if they had ever considered, you put in the dumpster at the, the south side next to one of those parking spaces with a, maybe they're not available here, but I've seen these side access dumpster pickups, the trucks, where they pick them up from the side, and so I was curious if that had ever been part of the discussion, to get it really on the property and access from the property instead of from the street.
I can say we have not thought about a side access. I didn't even know that existed, but we, it's not my favorite spot for it. It, it provides an easy access, and the dump, the dumpster truck having to make the turn around that south end of the building and that narrow kind of one-way exit was a little bit of, of a question. I think that will be an ongoing evaluation and conversation, and we may be back with Hunter and his staff if we come up with a better solution, but right now, that seemed to be the most workable opportunity.
Well, we certainly have other, I mean, it's not, we have other examples of this happening. I don't think it's into the world, I just keep wanting to find a better spot for it.
I would too, yeah.
Well, and I think you pointed out, probably one of the biggest challenges is that we, we don't have parking meters or anything like that, so somebody could park there for two, and leave their car for two or three days.
Yeah.
And the garbage could not be emptied, so I think that is a potential.
You always put a sign out, no parking from, you know.
Midnight to.
Midnight to so-and-so Wednesday mornings or something.
And, and when, when we had this discussion at the planning, at the board of adjustment level, you know, one of the things is, you know, we want, we want this to work, and we want guests to be happy and for this to be a, a good experience, and so if we have to figure out, you know, private trash, or we have to figure out something else, we'll do that. But for this purpose and for showing what we need to show on the site plan and, and get on to building permit side, you know, this seemed to be the best solution.
Sure.
Well, and if you did one of those signs, you do have a tow company owner right around the corner who might just make that part of his daily route.
If you do not want your car to be included in the trash takeout, do not park here on Wednesday nights. All right, thank you Jay. Any other questions?
I just have a, a quick comment. It, it reminds me, it's a smaller scale, I mean, yours is, is beautiful and lovely. I, I think it's perfect for our area, and I'm, I'm excited about it. Collegiate Hotel in Auburn is a similar setup with the parking in the back, and I think And I think that this will, this is probably even much nicer. And, you know, I don't know what the city thinks about a valet system for events, but I think we have great parking out here that would be.
That's certainly part of, part of the game plan. To the extent that rooftop can be event space, we would highly encourage, you know, anybody that uses that to have valet service and, and take advantage of the parking lot across the street. And, and the same goes for Arts and Crafts or for anything like that. We certainly anticipate during Mardi Gras, during Arts and Crafts, areas like that, we're gonna have to overstaff and we're gonna be parking in the city garage or we're gonna be parking, you know, I've, I've told the Board of Adjustment, if I have to take them down to our house at Battles, we'll park them in the backyard if we need to. But, I mean, it's all about managing that issue and we recognize that parking is going to be something we have to deal with on an ongoing basis.
And that, just the, that discussion, that's part of the evaluation because there is extra spots here most of the year. But those big events, we're gonna be blocking up this parking in, in a lot of events, so yeah, there.
But I mean, you've got the school parking lot, you know, during, there's a lot of places, the Nick Center parking lot, I think that there's a lot of places.
Valets are gonna have to be in good shape.
We've got.
The city has no problem licensing a valet parking company.
Another seventeen-year-old that'd really like to start one up.
I'd, I'd take this opportunity again, you know, working with Councilman Burrell on the, on the rooftop ordinance and the staff on this, it's been a year-long project and we really have tried to bring it into a realm of possibility that worked within the, the bounds of the ordinance and, and getting something that was economically feasible, but also provided the onsite parking that we needed. It'd been a whole lot easier and a lot, lot more economical for us to go lot line to lot line and add four, five, six more rooms. But I think this is a good fit for this site and a good use for the property.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any further questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just sorry to interrupt, there is a public hearing for this and we need to open the public hearing first.
This one is the public hearing, that is correct, and this one does stop here. This is not, this portion does not go into the City Council. So this is a public hearing, does anybody wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve case SD 23.02, subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilman Burrell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider the request of Jade Consulting again for FST, oh, we got that one already, excuse me. The next item was withdrawn. And finally, public hearing to consider the request of Seth Moore, of Moore surveying for a minor lot, two-lot subdivision, Morphe Avenue, nine tenths of a mile west of County Road 13. Yes, ma'am.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. The owner, FST Ellenberg, John W. Etux Belinda W., is requesting a two-lot minor subdivision approval. It is located between Morphe Avenue and Fleming Road, west of County Road 13. And the property is Zoned R2 within the city of Fairhope municipal limits. We have the zoning map and the site aerial for some context, as well as the proposed subdivision plat with the site data table. Staff initially had some concerns over drainage onsite. The existing conveyance system was modified in 2022 without staff's review or approval, and that's kind of indicated in the two pictures below, the orange being the modification. Both planning and building staff conducted site visits and reached out to the Corps of Engineers to discuss the modifications. And they were able to confirm that the drainage ditch modification was not in violation. However, due to the relocation of the drainage ditch, staff requests that a drainage easement be shown along the western property. And we're requesting that it be shown at the plat, on the plat and be approved by planning staff. The applicant has requested two waivers from the subdivision regulations, a sidewalk installation waiver and a wetland buffer signage waiver. Staff is amenable to the sidewalk waiver. An adjacent subdivision, Walker Place, was granted a waiver in 2020. However, staff is not amenable to the wetland buffer signage waiver. And a condition will be the installation along the wetlands onsite. General comments, there are three lots that are located within 450 feet of a fire hydrant. They do front on a publicly maintained road and they do meet the minimum lot size requirements. All lots shall only be accessed via Morphe Avenue. And the final plat must be recorded within 120 days of the date of final approval. As such, staff recommends conditional approval of SD 2225 Ellenberg Place Minor Subdivision with the following conditions. Wetland buffer signs shall be installed and verified by code enforcement prior to plat signature by the planning department, as well as drainage discharge easement shall be added to PPIN 101012, subject to staff approval. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. Moore is also present, the surveyor for the project.
Casey, where's the third lot?
There's two.
There's two, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm with you.
Did I have an error?
I, I understand.
I think that the confusing thing was the drainage easement wasn't in our, where I didn't see it in our packet, maybe I missed it.
Casey, doesn't the sidewalk on Morphe go to County Road 13?
It goes along, excuse me, 13 and crosses Morphe and goes, keeps going north. There is a newer sidewalk that goes from 13 east over to Windmill, I mean, Tops and Hall.
That was the project of single tax to build it, so it's in within two lots of a sidewalk.
I think it stops at Eddington.
The valuation we, we looked at of the Walker subdivision, just to the, one lot to the east.
West, west, to the west.
We looked at, there's drainage ditch there, we do have it, it's on the plat, but, you know, that, that's kinda the fitness test we looked at when we were doing it last year that didn't, we had the same thing, but certainly it wouldn't permit you to acquire that.
I've been talking to Richard Johnson about extending that, the sidewalk for the rest of the way along Morphe. So a lot of the thought has been, as these subdivisions kept going, let them, you know, fill those spots in. You know, that one's two lots from the, from the sidewalk, you know.
This is two lots away from the sidewalk?
Well, sidewalk picks up on Morphe at County Road 13 and goes all the way, you know, you can walk there all the way to, you know, Walmart basically on the sidewalk.
Well, you're, you're actually one, two, three lots.
Oh, three lots.
Three lots.
I stand corrected.
Over at least 500 feet or 600 feet to Morphe Avenue sidewalk.
But, Super Tax has been just nibbling at that a piece at a time. And now you can go, you know, County Road 13, you can take back all the way to the, you know, you can get back that way to the schools and the, and the ball fields and you can take Morphe all the way out to Walmart. I don't know, I mean, it, it'll be paid by somebody pretty soon, but, you know, when you can get it for free, why not?
Well, I guess in this case also, on the front lot, it's got an existing residence. It's not like they're gonna be building a residence on the front lot. It has an existing, and typically, you know, with subdivisions, you do it when the construction is and, there again. Now, I'd like to ask about.
Is this a subdivision or not? I mean, it's a subdivision, I mean, you know, we require one on the back on Fleming, but I mean, that would be silly, I'm, you know, when the construction's done then. We're not asking for that, just saying that, you know, we're trying to get all of Morphe done and man, those people down in the middle, not these specifically, with just a few lots to the west of here, man, you thought, you know, we were talking about coming in and putting a sewage tank in the front of their yards. They were talking about, you know, the sidewalk was gonna flood them and bring riffraff into town and, you know, whatnot. And, you know, Morphe's the last major road that doesn't have a sidewalk in there now.
They said the same thing about the sidewalk in Montrose, that it was gonna bring riffraff.
Haven't seen anybody carrying a TV on it yet, but there's always the first time. Yeah.
Maybe a lot of tree stumps, but, but I was, wanted to ask a question about the outlet easement. I mean, there's a fifteen-foot easement pretty much all the way around this property, drainage and utility easement. And the easement that we showed from where the new extension of the ditch goes from the existing easement over to the west property line, so I'm trying to find out where that would be.
I've gotten full size. So the.
You have a, a drainage easement all the way, and this is a drainage and utility easement already. So it's connecting the end of this with that easement.
So staff was requesting it be on the adjacent property, just because the drainage was modified and affecting their property and we would be much more comfortable with there being an easement that they consent to with the recording of this plat, just so that way that the city is more comfortable with, with that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do that with adjacent property.
On that. But are requiring a sidewalk easement up there?
It's, it's on the plat on the.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a sidewalk easement all along Morphe.
Any, any questions? This is a public hearing, isn't it? Thank you, Seth, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman. Chairman, I just wanna let you know that planning and building staff both went to the site, we walked the site, and I had direct calls and contacts with Eric Buckaloo at the Corps to ask about the drainage easement that was dug to connect those two areas. He said, because that was, that was one of my concerns, was you basically connected a drainage easement from a, from an upper wet, jurisdictional wetlands to a lower. He said, doing that actually connects jurisdictional wetlands, which he did not see as a negative thing. He was good with that. So, just so you know, we looked into that. With the buffer signs, the reason we want the buffer signs there is once somebody starts building, we are forever having to come back later and get onto folks for building stuff and putting fences and mowing areas in the wetland buffer. So getting those signs in so that area is delineated is helpful instead of having to come back later and correct a problem that's happened later. And making somebody have to come back and restore a wetland because they didn't know where the line was.
Thank you. And I guess my final question is, is there a sidewalk easement there already? Because I don't see it in the staff recommendation.
He said there was.
It's on the plat.
It's on there.
It's a shared, right in front of Morphe, it's a shared sidewalk utility and drainage.
It's 15 feet.
It may be small on what you're looking at.
Well, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
But it's on the plat, yes, sir.
Because I know, you know, that area's a jurisdictional right-of-way, so, do you know how far that extends? That sidewalk easement, just out of curiosity.
From west property line to east property line, all the way across the front.
It doesn't go to any neighbors.
Seth, we really need that easement, I know that's a driveway, where a driveway is.
It's on the lot, the one that she has.
It goes all the way across that, because that was one of the, the questions in our meeting in December about that. And I added that to that.
Okay.
To make sure it does go all the way across from east to west.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question, is it, and, and, and this is just a question because I feel like it, it may be a burden on the owner of the property. You mentioned this would be the opportune time to put a sidewalk. Could you put a condition of approval, since we are allowing another lot here, that it's such time in the future that a sidewalk abuts the east of the property, or west side of the property and the east side of the property, sidewalk must be connected across this property? Can you make that a condition of approval? And, uh.
At whose expense?
It would be at the owner's, it, it, but you could also have, you know, if Single Tax says they're gonna put a sidewalk in from 13 all the way to.
I mean, you could, you could argue, make the argument, I'm satisfied with that.
Bishop Road or something, they don't have, they don't have to pay for it.
I mean, they're paying their single tax dues and, you know, Single Tax has been paying for that, so you can make the argument, they pay their single tax dues and that's part of the benefit of it, you know. Single Tax tries to build the sidewalks and, you know, front of areas with single tax houses so that, you know, they can consider that part of their dues there, you know, requiring them to do it. And then Single Tax pays for, you know, the sidewalk on all their neighbors, you know, is that fair? I mean, I, you could argue it either way, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy with this as long as the right-of-way is there.
I mean, we did, not to directly, I've said it before, so that's kinda hard to reinforce depending on how far down the road. But one of the things with just putting the sidewalk in this area, as we, we've discussed during the, there is a drainage there. So I think when we put a sidewalk in this area, it's gonna take a bigger picture of how those things.
Make sure you hit all of your elevations for PDA and everything else.
Well, as I said, I thought it would be more that it'd be a public works project than, than, but if you, I thought you were looking to maybe add that.
We, we have been under Single Tax and, and the city's been very kind, that the city's been paying for the concrete, and Single Tax has been doing the installation. It's been a pretty symbiotic relationship. And we're talking to Richard Johnson because, you know, a lot of the places, you know, Single Tax will just go out and the guys just build it because it's just nice and flat. And you get on the premises and you say, hey, let's give this tree a little more space and it's easy to move. As Hunter mentioned, there's some, you know, little hair in this area where you've gotta worry about some ditches and some, you know, trees and areas.
And just to kinda bring you into some of our internal discussions, I think the appropriate tool, we don't have in our toolbox right now, but when we waive the installation of this, I think we should have an, we talked about in lieu of fees for parking for sidewalks. We have a flat rate when we give a waiver for installation, the easement is created and that in lieu of fee comes to the city to use at a future time. But that takes some setting up those funds in a, in a singular, singular account that can only be used for those sidewalks. So that's some procedural things that we'd have to work through, probably at the council and certainly with accounting to figure that out.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Can these individual lots be subdivided into a further minor subdivision?
Not unless you go on paper road.
We do have a very, within the zoning code, when, when we say a, what a flag lot is, it's very specific. So Lee has a famous drawing from a couple of years ago of stacked flag lots, that's not a possibility here.
You also, to interject here, you've also got a lot of wetlands that you wouldn't be able to get the lot size.
What is the width on Morphe?
I hear those arguments a lot, but somehow in 25 or 30 years from now, they magically find a way to subdivide.
I think you could absolutely subdivide it again. You could, you could put right down the middle on Morphe, you could put two lots, and then you could put two more lots on Fleming in the rear.
Well, Fleming you cannot, so you could get two.
Fleming you're not because it's not open, it's not paved street. Yeah, I guess one day if, if somebody tore the house down, that's an R2, isn't it?
Yes.
It's R2, so.
You could get a maximum of two.
I'm not sure if you have the front footage.
Was that 223?
So after you take out the ease, the ingress egress flag, it's 180 and R2 minimum width standard is 75.
You could get two lots, but the house would have to come down completely.
Yeah.
To make that happen.
I don't think that this, that this body needs to start looking at some regulations that once you subdivide into a minor subdivision, if they try to subdivide the minor subdivisions into further minor subdivisions as a way to just completely keep adding lots, it needs to revert back to the original underlying plat and then follow all the rules and regulations of the original plat. That's, that's the way I know at least one county handled it, I talked to somebody.
I thought we had a restriction of how many times it could subdivide. I thought it was only twice.
There's been a lot of jurisdictional changes, so there's, anything in the zoning ordinance, each lot would have to meet zoning and there's, there's.
And there's, so, to Councilman Burrell's point, I think that is something to consider when things are being bypassed. You know, we're just minor, minor, minor to get around regulations.
So, could we have a trigger that turns it into a major subdivision if it had been previously subdivided?
I think there's a way to do that. I would think that would be on the, when, on the front end, when somebody submits an application as more, as, you know, the, you know, the understanding that we're reviewing this as a minor, if anything triggers this within a, probably have to do a period of time, whether that's two years, five years, you know, you wouldn't want to go seventy years down the road. You might have fifteen different owners since then and that gets a little muddy. But I think that's the, maybe the appropriate place, but probably going to lean on the legal team too to help us figure those requirements out.
Yeah, there'd have to be some amendments to the regulations, obviously. And I think Holly may have been thinking of some of the changes to the law, the county, so outside of the city limits, the new law changed the family subdivision and put restrictions on that. And that may be what you're thinking about where there is. And maybe we can follow some of that language to come up with our own inside the city limits. But that law doesn't apply inside the city limits.
And there was some, there was an evolution in those family, that said, Art, you were on the planning commission, you couldn't, at the county, you couldn't transfer that within two years or sell that, you know, for the family exemption or have to come back in.
That's a new, that's a new rig.
Let's go ahead and move on with this. Any other questions about this specific item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, SD twenty-two twenty-five Ellenberg Place. I move that we approve subject to staff recommendations with a sidewalk easing reflected on the plat.
All right, do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
I got it. Now that that's done, let me, I know we've talked about this before, but I think it's real important and.
Do we need to be opening the meeting or can we?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we need to still keep the meeting open?
Yeah, you keep the meeting open. What, you got somewhere to be? The issue has to do with, as an example, would be on Gaffer, Gaffer Avenue, where I'm assuming it's either, I'm assuming that's the city doing that, doing the work on Gaffer. Is that right?
It's a state, city, county project.
The point is, is not the work is being done, but it's where the sidewalk is. Now that we're talking about sidewalks again, the sidewalk, we're doing absolutely nothing, in my opinion, in terms of protecting those that use these sidewalks by having approximately six inches from the edge of the pavement to the beginning of the sidewalk. We had a situation, I think I've told you all this before, a situation in Spring Hill once upon a time, sidewalk just like that, somebody jumped a curb and killed three little children walking to St. Ignatius. The point is, is that we have no, we have no barrier at all in a lot of our sidewalks. And if we're going to have sidewalks like this, we need to do something to protect, especially the kids. But the kids are going to walk to school, for example, on Gaffer. My goodness gracious, I wouldn't want my kid walking there. People don't go twenty-five miles an hour on Gaffer. It's a horrible little street to start off with, but when you've got sidewalks that are that close, now, maybe it's a curb, maybe we need a curb to protect our, protect the edges of the sidewalk. But something's got to be, that's got to be figured out because we've got a bunch of these places where this is the situation. And if we continue to do it, all we're doing is asking for a big lawsuit. And I just, I think it's time to start focusing on that. It is a real problem. So, that's all I got.
Well, that's another thing you've brought me up is, you know, why does the municipalities come for eleven fifty-two elevens? Like, you know, AT&amp;T does and C Spire does, but whenever the municipality, you know, has a project, they used to come for eleven fifty-two elevens. And I don't know when that ceased.
From two thousand seven, best I can tell.
Well, some have, or went through the Board of Adjustment, but I don't think this is the time or place for these discussions.
No, I agree, but I think that might be something to be looked into. You know, see, because a lot of things, you know, first, I was kind of wondering why in the world you have an eleven fifty-two eleven when you don't really have a lot of, you know, the only way to deny, you know, a lot of these several projects. But as I've been on them, I think that sometimes just, you know, airing stuff out, you get a lot of really good input from people that say, I remember, you know, one time a project was about to get going and Gary Moore, who's, you know, on the board, said, you know, by the way, you know, y'all are going through seventeen people's front yards where you don't have a right-of-way, you know, down on Mobile Avenue. And, you know, saved a heck of an expensive lawsuit just by having a set of eyes that happened to have, you know, looked down on those, you know, looked on those surveys recently, just kind of threw that out and saved somebody a lot of money. We had some, you know, successes timed sidewalks in up there to the, to the elementary school, you know, up on Sexton Street as well. So, I think just because there are more people seeing and saying, hey, why don't we, you know, work this together? So, just an idea that, you know, council, you know, might want to look into and think about.
And just a quick update, there is one more agenda item that's the subdivision regulation amendments we talked about a little bit last month and want to give you an update. When, I think the goal was to clarify a big set of documents for jurisdictional things that have evolved over the course of probably thirty years. And once we started getting into that, started pulling strings, and I just have one slide, but I want to show you an example and really get you to think about some things. The rural subdivisions, when it comes to standards that they have to install, this was always when there's, somebody's doing twenty acres or more, you know, they're exempt from a lot of the big road standards, things like that. It was more rural. When you get to this, the first requirement there is it has to be entirely outside of the city limits. So, one way to look at that is, we'll just strike this whole section. I'm advising on this one, we probably don't want to do that because there might be opportunities to annex some larger pieces of land that might want twenty acres. I even would propose, let's, let's look at making ten-acre lots, you know, there might be a rule. But that's probably a conversation we need to have when it gets into some of these details. So, we certainly did not get that opportunity to send you a red line for the whole subdivision regulations. Hope we'll be able to do that and get you some things to discuss and probably reaching out before the meeting, probably on a one-on-one, you know, with a couple at a time to get some feedback before we come back next month with a final red line. But that's just an update, since it was advertised and on the agenda, wanted to touch base with that. But we don't have anything to propose to change tonight.
Well, I have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No further discussion.